Amen. Um, before I begin, I want to do something special. We have a group of people from my church, Cali Church, that are going to be going to Romania, and two of them for sure are here, right? The Hannahs. Is anybody else from your group here? Anybody that is going to go to Romania? Will you, will you come to the front? Will you come to the front, Robert, with your beautiful wife? And I've asked my friend and your church member, Dr. Bill Thrasher, to come and bless you, and bless Rick Hoffman, and bless Cheryl Connor, and they're going to Romania from, let's say, August 3rd through August 14th. So let the Holy Spirit... Where's the microphone? On the floor? Oh, okay. Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. This is my friend, Dr. Bill Thrasher, professor at Moody Bible Institute, and a man of prayer. Anybody else that wants to come and lay hands on them, they may do that now. And we're going to pray for this group that is going to Romania. Hallelujah!
Lord, thank you for the privilege of partnering with them in this way, small but significant. And we pray, God, that you would prepare them in every way, as Paul prayed he would come to Rome, in the fullness of the blessing of Christ. We pray you'd allow them to go to Romania in the fullness of the blessing of Christ. We pray you'd prepare them physically and emotionally, spiritually, keep them safe. We pray in their darkest moments, God, you would send your help from heaven. We ask you to give great unity. We pray you'd be strong in every fiery dark that's thrown at them, Lord Jesus. And we pray, even as we're taught tonight, that their love for you and for the ones that they minister to would abound more and more in knowledge and discernment. We pray that of all the things they can do in this short time, you'd help them to approve the things that are excellent. And we pray one day, when they stand before you, they would be sincere and blameless in the day that you would reward them, having been filled with the fruit of righteousness, which comes to the glory and praise of God. Hear this prayer, do not forget it. Remind us in times, in these weeks ahead, to intercede for him. And we pray this in Christ's name, amen.
And don't forget them now. When you come back, you need to give us a report. Amen? Thank you for being here. Thank you. Thank you. Who's going to be handling the microphone? You or Heather or somebody else will be handling the microphone? Let me see why it is here. Let me see. Okay, so tonight, we're going to have, probably we will continue next week because I need to be faithful to the time tonight. But tonight, what we want to do is, the last many months, I've been preaching from Joshua, and I have covered their first seven chapters, as you remember, and I cover through chapter eight, verse three. And then I connected Joshua with Jesus because I've been teaching us that Joshua is the Jesus of the Old Testament. And I brought in Jesus when he said in Matthew 22, that's why I have it up there, Matthew 22:37-40, that Jesus said that we must love God the Father like he does, like he does, with all of our heart, with all of our soul, with all of our mind, because that is the first and greatest commandment. And then the second is like it, he says, that we must love our neighbor as we love ourselves. And that is, I believe, the example that Joshua gave us. And then Jesus said that on those two commandments hang the entire Old Testament. That's what he says. So tonight, what I want to do is give you a three or four minute review in case that you forgot what Joshua is about. And then I want to entertain questions or comments. And we're going to go to about eight or five or eighteen at the latest tonight because we are a little late, but then hopefully next week I want to continue because Joshua is about the impossible. And there are so many people here that need something big to happen, something impossible to happen. So Joshua 1 is about what? Arising and going and being prepared and not fearing, but to be courageous, Joshua says that. He says, "As I was with Moses, I'm going to be with you. I'm going to have my hand on you," Joshua says. And of course, Joshua 2 is about a prostitute. You know Rahab, the least of this. And God chooses Rahab as a vehicle of grace for Israel, for Joshua. Then of course, the third chapter, we have a favorable verse there, verse 5, that says, "Consecrate, because tomorrow you're going to see my wonders." So our Father is about his astonishing, wonderful wonders that he wants to show through us. We want to see miracles happen. And then we see chapter three and four is about what? Crossing the Jordan. And Joshua saw that God used Moses to cross the Red Sea. So if God opened the Red Sea, he can open the Jordan, he can open the way for you, you see? So Jesus is reminding us that we have to love God. So Joshua was loving God by being obedient to God, obeying without what? Delay. I mean, you got it. And then we see in Joshua 5, well, Joshua 4, Joshua 4, what happens? And 3, God affirms Joshua's ministry. And we need for God to affirm us, to confirm us, to encourage us tonight and every day of our lives. And we see Joshua 5, we see what? Circumcision. The people you know sin against God, and only two of them made it into the promised land. Everybody else was killed because sin has a consequence. Sin has a consequence. Don't ever forget that. Whenever you choose to sin, think about the consequence of your sin and the people that you're going to hurt, bless you, and bless you again, and the people that you're going to hurt because of your sin, because you never sin by yourself. When you sin, you drag a lot of people with you, through the mud, through your mud, through your messes. You see what I'm saying? So Joshua 5 is about the new people entering. They have to be circumcised, they have to be separated, because when you become a Christian, you become holy as God is holy, you see? And then we see Joshua 6, the conqueror of Jericho. And who conquered Jericho? God did. God did. And he made the people believe, he made the people believe that they did it, but it was not them, it was God. God gave Yahweh, means what? The deliverer. God delivered Jericho into the people's hands, because God promised it, you see? And what happened in chapter 6, beautiful? Rahab appears again in chapter 6. Amazing! And who was Rahab? She was the lineage of Christ. Hallelujah! That should encourage you. If you believe that you are nobody, if you believe that you are nobody of a statue, that you have sinned so much that God cannot use you, listen, God would use you. God would use the least of this. That's why God is in love with sinners. He is in love with sinners. Not only did he save Rahab, he saved her entire family. That's why we believe in election, because we didn't choose ourselves, God chose us. Hallelujah! Of all the people in the world, I've been chosen to be part of this championship team. And of course, remember Joshua 7? We spent what, seven weeks in Joshua 7? Remember? Who's the main character? Achan. Achan is the main character. And what happened in Joshua 7? Achan is punished. He's killed. Stones burned to death, him and his family. So here, here's the contrast. Here's the contrast here. Hi. Here's the contrast here. Rahab, the prostitute, that was outside the fault. She's burned to the fault, God promised her that if you do this, I'll do this. She got saved, the family got saved. Achan, who was in the fault, who was in the fault, him and his family are killed. Look at the contrast. Remember the jailer? The jailer? Him and his family got saved too, by the way, in New Testament. So my point is this, sin is deadly. John Piper says that sin is the suicidal abandonment of joy. There's no joy in sin at all, because you're not have a guilty conscience. And what did he tell Joshua? Arise! Why? Because of his great name. Great name. So why are we here for? Why Joshua? Because we have to be in love with the name of the Father, about his reputation, it's all about the Father's name. The Christian life is about the Father's name. We are responsible as Christians to defend with our very lives the holy name of God the Father. We have to preach and live God's holiness. And then what happens in chapter eight? In chapter seven, they got defeated because of Achan's sin. One man caused everybody to lose. That's the gospel, isn't it? Who's Christ? The second Adam. Because of him we won, because of the first Adam we lost. We see here that in chapter eight, AI is given to Joshua. God gives AI to Joshua. So that's a little summary of Joshua 1 through 8. So I'm going to work on questions or comments. Anybody, we have the microphone ready to go. We have either Heather or, I don't know, Roland or somebody wants to ask a question about Joshua 1 through 8 and how that applies to you. Joshua is very applicable to each of our lives for today. Joshua has everything we need, actually. Everything we need is in Joshua. Any questions? Any question is good question. Any comment? Yes, Ben? Okay, here? Right there?
The Bible is truth and very real for me and my life, and I'm just wondering, how many years transpired between chapter one and chapter eight in Joshua's life?
I don't know exactly how many years, Ben, but it was during Joshua's lifetime, so it wasn't too much. Remember Joshua 1 from 1 to 24? And that was during Joshua's ministry of being the leader. So I don't know how many years exactly, but from 1 to 8, I would guess maybe 10 years?
Because things last 10 years in my life. Pain lasts. You know, pain lasts.
Yeah.
And we have to fight and we have to rise up.
Exactly.
And I love these examples.
Thank you, because the book of Joshua is about arising and shining. We have to, maybe that mic is not going to work, we're going to use this mic over here. So it's about arising, going, being prepared, and shining, and shining. Next question.
Manny, I'm going to play for just a little minute. Arise and prepare and go. 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 Where?
Whatever God sends you.
All different directions? Our TO loses its power if we all go in different directions. My brother, if I was to come into your inner sanctum of prayer and ask you where you think God is sending Thursday night, RTO, where would that be?
We are here because we want to pray together. We want to love people by praying for them. We pray radically to love radically, and the focus of this ministry is to really minister to those family members who have loved ones in prison. Matter of fact, I was so encouraged to see my friend Annabelle, who is here with us tonight, Garza, whose son, as you know, is facing many years behind bars. As you know, he was a gun banger, and he killed another young man in a gunfight. She's 17 years old. And in the midst of her pain, she wants to begin a ministry, Janice and Sue and Kathy, two mothers who have loved ones in prison. So she came to me tonight, she wants to begin a bilingual ministry, because there are many Hispanic mothers that have no idea what's going on in the system, and she wants to begin that. Another mother is here tonight, she came all the way from Michigan, and I just happened to meet her son, her son, who is a Wheaton graduate, Ken Chase, and her son is in prison right now on a 35-year sentence. And he was an attorney, believing Wheaton as well, and he wrote a book. So I'm encouraged to see mothers and people here arising, arising to the need of family members. That's how this ministry was birthed. So yes, we want everybody to come, but the focus of this ministry is family members of those who are in prison. We also want to minister to those who have come out, like my friend came here tonight, who I met at Hill, right? So we want people here who have been in prison as well, you know. So we are here. The focus of every Christian is to have an intimate relationship with God the Father, so we can be like Joshua. Joshua did not make any move except a couple times in Joshua without praying. Even in Joshua 7, he went down on the ground and he prayed, and he found out that he was aching. And the elders, that's why we need to pray corporately. Corporate prayer is very, very critical in the church. It cannot be without. It has to be in the church. So we are here to pray together, to love together.
So come together.
Come together.
On Thursday night.
Thursday night.
Pray radically and serve those of all nature and makeup that are involved in prison ministry.
Yeah, yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And we want to see Denise's husband released, we want to see Diana's husband released, we want to see Salvador transfer, we want to feel your pain. Tim has a question.
I got the...
Oh, you have a question. Oh, I'm sorry, you have a question too. Go ahead.
Okay. In chapter seven, and this is always fascinating to me since way back when, in verse 19, Joshua said to Achan, "My son, give glory to the Lord God of Israel and give praise to him, and tell me now what you have done, and do not hide it from me." Could it be said then that we glorify God when we confess sin?
Yeah, we do, because when we do not confess, see, that's a very good point, David, whenever we don't confess sin, we quench the Holy Spirit. When we do not confess sin, we quench the Holy Spirit. And many of us only confess what we want to confess. And you heard me say this in my sermons, unfortunately, in the evangelical church in America, we only confess when we get caught. And even then, and even then, we confess partially. That's why we must keep it 100. Ben, I left my 100 present hat in Angola. Ben, and you know the hat, yeah. So confession is a way of hallowing the name of the Father. Confession is part of the Christian discipline. Confess to one another. That's why we have thrown the baby out with the bathwater when it came to the Reformation. Martin Luther never, never, ever wanted for confession to go away, but somehow it has happened. It's good to confess. That's why when we pray corporately, after you have intimacy with your group, then you begin to confess, right, Jan Romano? You see, that's why it's so critical, so essential, so imperative, that everyone in the church participates in corporate prayer. It is critical, essential. Yes, Tim?
Okay, Manny.
I'm sorry, Barbara, what were you saying?
Well, because confession is agreeing with God, so that's how we glorify sin, for agreeing with God. Yes, this is wrong. And I did that, so that's how it...
I'm always confessing to Barbara. I'm always confessing to Barbara. Yes. Love your wife as God, as Christ loved the church and gave himself for her. Yes, Tim?
Okay, thank you, Barbara. That actually clarified it a little bit even more for me. Changing the subject a little bit, I'm always interested in the protege aspect of Joshua compared to Moses. Is there a lot of, like, description of training in the same way that Paul trained Timothy? Is there, like, a parallel there?
Yeah. As a matter of fact, I always say this, that most of what we know is not taught, is caught. And Joshua followed Moses. Matter of fact, in Joshua, at the end of chapter eight, which I'm not there yet, I'm going to begin that in the next couple weeks, we see that Joshua read every, all the words, thank you, all the words of Moses. Blessings and curses. Because remember this, God also has a side that is his wrath, and you don't want to be on that side. You don't want to be on that side. You don't want for God's hand to be removed from you because you're sinning. And you say, I say, "Well, that happened in the Old Testament, that doesn't happen now." Really? Try him. Try him. Try him. Don't, you know, I just say that, and I have chills in me. We have to be sensitive to the voice of Yahweh. We have to be obedient to the voice of Yahweh, and we need to find our complete satisfaction in Christ alone. You know who I used to be, right? I used to be a sexual addict. God removed that from me. My only woman is right over there, and I love that woman, and she knows I love her. I let her know every day, 10:50, and she knows everywhere I go, she knows where I am at any point of the day, just by my own will. I want to be accountable to my wife, because she's my wife. But above that, I want to be accountable to my Father. We need to be intentional. Well, don't get into my business. It is not your business. You're a slave to Christ anyway. Why are you so tense about? What do you have to hide? What do you have to hide? Let's be open. You know, Martin Luther put it this way, it's called correndel, open before the face of God and open before the face of men, because we are naked before God anyway. It's not how you say it, it's how you live it. Amen? Next question. We're having good questions. I want Joshua to get ingrained in us. Ingrained in us. Yes. Okay, Diana? Diana, come over here, I want to hear your voice. I don't hear you.
Sorry, my leg is asleep.
Don't be sorry.
Okay. So the book of Joshua is in the Old Testament?
Yeah.
Before the Holy Spirit, correct?
No, the Holy Spirit was always there.
Okay. I guess that's my question, because obedience, not that, like, it seems that some people have an easier time of arising and going. And Joshua was one of the 12 spies, correct?
Um, yes.
Okay, so 12 people kind of witnessed the same thing, but 10 saw one thing and two saw the other, one of which was Joshua. So I feel like it was like a mindset that he had of just seeing things the way that God intended him to. And I guess for us as believers, sometimes our circumstances are contrary to even his promises. And I guess I was just looking for some encouragement for all of us, I don't know, to have the mindset that Joshua did versus the other 10 spies. I don't know if that's a good question or not, but...
It's a good question. Joshua, that's why I've been speaking about Joshua, because Joshua faced almost the same challenges that Moses did. And Joshua saw and experienced every challenge that Moses experienced as well. Joshua was there for Moses the whole time. He was there when Moses went up to the mountain to get the 10 commandments. He was there when Moses went to the mountain to get the dictation for the Tavannah call. He was with Joshua when God spoke to Moses and said, "Get down there, get down here, because these people have..." God said, "What? Corrupted." When they built the golden calf. He saw Moses in a seed, in a seed for a people that God the Father wanted to annihilate, wanted to wipe out. And Moses said, "You cannot do that, you just cannot do that, Father, you..." I mean, he was hot and said, "You cannot do that. You, 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 you know, if you kill all these people, what are the enemies are going to say?" So he was concerned with the name of the Father. You see, he was praying in that way. So Joshua is no different than you and I. And I told you that the Holy Spirit was selectively given, that's why when David prays, he says, "Father, don't take away the Holy Spirit from me." But now we're living in an era, in an age where the Holy Spirit dwells in every Christian. Joshua, this is pre-cross, this is pre-crop, this is pre-Calvary. Now we are living post-Calvary. We have seen God's revelation more clearly. We have seen that the Holy Spirit dwells in the believer and that every Christian has that power, the same power that rose from the dead, the same power you have it. But what happens? We doubt. And one of my emphasis in the last months have been to teachers, especially people like you, Diana, who said, "Man, I'm married to Modesto, I'm going to these old court appearances, I'm going to court, I'm going here, I'm going there, I'm going to Dixon to visit my husband. Father, how much more, how much longer are you going to keep my husband in there?" You see what I'm saying? Same thing with Denise, same thing with Todd. I mean, so Joshua is there, so we will not faint. Joshua is there, so we will not faint. It is so easy to faint. It is so easy to give up and take a break for ourselves. Take a self-vacation from God. That is dangerous. You never want to take a vacation from God. You don't want to be on your own. You don't, "Okay, God, I catch you in a couple weeks for now. I catch you tomorrow." No, 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 you don't want to say that to God, because he's with you. Joshua 1:5, he's with you. He will never leave you, he's going to be with you. You go here, he goes there, you go there, you go here. He is going to be there with you. And you, and you need to have the desire within yourself, like Joshua, to want God to be with you. It's not just that he wants to be with you, it's that you want to be with him. I want to be with my wife. I enjoy being with my wife. I enjoy being with you guys. I enjoy being in prayer meetings. I enjoy being with Bill Thrasher, with Kathleen, with How, with Jan Romano, with... with Jan, with Fred, with Ben. I enjoy being in prayer. We need to want that. And guess what? That comes through a prayer life. You see, three things. Number one, we need to pray that God will give us the desire of Joshua to pray. Number two, that God will give us the confidence of Joshua to pray. That we will pray with the same confidence. When Joshua prayed, he knew that he heard from God. And his ear was attentive to the voice of God, and he obeyed God. That kind of relationship is available to each of us. But what happens? We doubt. We question. We rebel. We don't believe this, we believe that. We become selective in our belief system. And then for us believers here, we need to pray with the help of the Holy Spirit. So in a way, Diana, we have an advantage to Joshua. We really do. We have an advantage to Joshua. So Joshua has to become you. I want Joshua to become our best friend. I mean, when we get to chapter 24, man, it's gonna be amazing. But for me and my house, we're gonna serve the Lord. Hallelujah. But for me and my house, hallelujah, we're gonna serve the Lord. You know what I'm saying? Did I, did I help you? Did I encourage you? Okay, that's the goal. Okay, how about one more question, and then we're gonna continue next week? Of course he did. Of course he did. He disobeyed God. I believe it's in chapter 10, he didn't consulted with God. You know, they got tricked, either nine or 10 there. They got tricked, because he said that they didn't consulted with God. One thing, guys, that we could never, I have to say this to myself. I'm speaking now to myself. We cannot afford not to pray. Many of us believe that if we busy in God's business, that we doing his will. No. You could be real busy serving the devil in Jesus' name. You could be in every committee in the church. You could be in church seven days a week. You could be participating in all the events in the church. And that's not what God wants you to do. Remember, not about doing, it's about being. It's about being. It's about being. We need to be like Christ. And to be like Christ is to pray like Christ, because Christ loved the Father. We pray because we love the Father, and we wanna be with the Father as much as the Father want to be with us. That's the kind of intimacy I'm talking about. That when you pray, you don't pray because you need help. You pray because you have a relationship. You pray because you want to be with the Father. We don't, we don't come, Father, for anything. We come because we wanna praise you for everything. That's Joshua. That's Joshua. Any last hard question? I don't wanna leave you hanging. We will continue next week. Call the people that have not been here in a while, so they can come next week. Bring them over. See, one thing about Joshua, let me give you one word about Joshua. Joshua was very consistent. He sinned, but he was consistent. He knew that he messed up, and he quickly rectified it. A Christian knows when he sins, and he wants to rectify it immediately. Immediately. Christians are teachable. Christians are humble. Christians are consistent, not perfect. We are consistent. And we must be consistent in developing and cultivating a relationship with the Father that is intimate, that is radical. Amen? Ken, would you like to come and bless us? I always love how you pray. This is my friend Ken Chase from Wheaton College. You have heard him before. And let the Holy Spirit lead you to pray and give us a blessing tonight. Give us a benediction tonight. We wanna be, didn't we lay on that for you today? We wanna pray now for Christians, that they will be blessed and that they will be driven, that they will be, that they will become radically in love with Christ, that they cannot get Christ out of their heads. And one thing, what I want you to remember? Is what I wanna bring God any shame. That's my goal every single hour that I live. My immediate goal is only one, one objective, is I don't wanna bring God the Father any shame. And after one thing, I'm after revival. I'm after revival. I don't want nothing from the world. Nothing from the world. I don't want suits, I don't want cars, I don't want houses, I don't want nothing. I want Christ. That's why I love Angola, because Angola is about one thing. It's about the sufficiency of Christ in prison in Angola. That's it. Things do not attract you anymore. Things will distract you from Christ. Keep you busy. Keep you busy. Focus on Christ. Remember what he said? Don't go to the left. Don't go to the right. Stay focused. Stay focused, right? Don't move. Stay, don't, don't drift. Don't deviate. Don't get away from the way. Christ is the way, the truth, and the life. Joshua knew that. And he never read John 14:6. He didn't have the gospel of John, didn't he, that's a bill? He didn't have John, but he had the Father. He didn't have the New Testament. He had Yahweh. And he had the example of Moses. And remember that his mentor, excuse me, his mentor was fired. Moses was fired. And he comes on an emergency to replace his mentor. And God tells him, "Get everybody ready. We have to get moving here, because in three days, three, hello, three days, we're gonna have to get this Jordan cross." But the Jordan was impossible to cross, because it was overflowed with water. But that's nothing for God. Little water, that's nothing for God. And the whole thing was parted. What is your problem in your life? What do you want God to pardon your life? But are you willing to consecrate? Do you want the wonders to happen? Are you willing to separate? Are you willing to be circumcised? Are you willing to have your heart circumcised tonight? That's the question that Joshua is asking us tonight. You cannot have the cake and eat it too. It's either God's way or no way. It's either God's way or no way. You cannot be going back and forth, in and out. No, 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 you have to be in or out. Joshua says, "Be in. Don't be in and out." What is your motivation? That's very important that we ask those questions to ourselves. Go ahead. I love you, Ken Chase.
I love you, Manny. That was a blessing. Father, you tell us that we ought not to love the things of this world. The lust of the flesh, the lust of the eyes, the boastful pride of life, these are the things that keep us busy and prevent us from focusing extremely exclusively closely on you. Father, would you purge us? Would you clarify? Would you focus? And Father, you can do these things. You did them with Joshua, you did them with Rahab. Whoever we are, whatever we've done, you can do these things through us. Help us to set aside the things of this world, so that we may look only on Jesus, the Author and the Perfector of our faith. May we go in peace through the death, burial, and resurrection of your Son, through the intercessory power of your Spirit, and through your love and grace, in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Ken.